Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, January 23, 2023. We will call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM precisely, actually. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a moment of silence, please. I want to announce that this meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook page, and will be available for playback. We begin our meeting, as we begin all of our meetings, with the opportunity for the public to comment. Do we have anyone registered for a public comment?
No one has signed up there.
Okay. Anyone in the gallery interested in a three-minute opportunity?
Yeah, I've got just a couple briefings.
Yes, if you could, if you could actually bring yourself to the podium, please.
Is it only about agenda items?
No, no, this moment, this opportunity is all yours. You have three minutes to talk about anything you would like, you'd like the council to know about.
All right, I'll talk to you briefly.
Thank you, and if you could start with your name and address.
Hi, Robert Barker, 7466 Brandon Brook Circle. Good evening, everybody. I recognize a couple of faces there. So my first council meeting, I had the opportunity to see you all streaming, I guess, from last month's meeting, and I was very impressed, and I thought I'd want to come down and actually participate in the function.
Wonderful, thank you.
I want to point out specifically Mr. Dyer. Mr. Dyer, I felt that during the last meeting, that your, your perspective very much matches my own, so I feel well presented by you on the council. So I thought that was interesting. Anyway, a couple of things real quick I wanted to bring up. One of them has to do with leaf collections every year.
Okay, yes.
I had the unfortunate opportunity the other night to drop my son's key fob down into the storm drain by my house. So I popped open the lid, and I had to go through about three feet of wet, solid leaves to find it, and the leaves now have gotten so deep, they're about three, four feet deep, that if they were to freeze, they would probably block the pipes.
Okay.
It could result in flooding. So I thought it might be something the town would look at, is servicing these storm drains to remove the leaves, because if they do freeze up, we could cause a flooding problem.
I appreciate that heads up. It is something that staff and I have been discussing when floating around the idea of annual leaf collection at the curbside, if not residentially, certainly, to make sure we're keeping those storm gutters clean.
Well, this, this is actually, they do blow them out at the top when they come through for the collection, but where I grew up in New York is they actually would put that tube down in there and draw out all that stuff from the sump.
When it's dry and, and earlier in the fall.
Right, and if it gets wet and waterlogged, it plugs the piping, then it's going to cause a flood.
Okay.
Second thing, real briefing is just a, a suggest or an offer. I live by Green Park, which has the path going down into the linear trail and where the lake is, and the leaves, the trees there are rather leafy and stuff. I was wondering, would the town entertain maybe a self-help thing to sort of remove some of the lower limbs, to open up the air in that area, go down there, let some fresh air and some sunshine in there a little bit more, and I mean, I'd be willing to cut the limbs if the town would bring up a chipper.
That's very kind of you as well. I think just bringing it to our attention should be adequate, and we actually have just very recently been discussing the, the maintenance of our public trees, and so that's something that our Department of Public Works can certainly address, and it's now noted, I just watched it get written down in the magic notebook.
And, and no, no intention to bring it to, I mean, anything against public works. It was just something that I would bring up as a suggestion, but.
We love those kinds of suggestions.
When they get iced down, they, they drag down, and sometimes they're at my height walking the dog, and you know, getting whipped in the eye with a branch.
Yeah, that's not good. That's not good. No, I appreciate the heads up, and you said, what was the name of the park? I didn't recognize.
Shannon Run Park.
Oh, Shannon Run.
And right across from the path going down, but they can't easily see it.
Let us open that up. That sounds like a good plan.
That's all I had for tonight. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks for coming up here this evening. So that brings us to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes from January 9, 2023 meeting, as well as the resolution number 2023-02, allowing alcohol at the DSE events. Presuming there is no need for discussion for any of these, either of these items, I'll ask for a motion. If there is, jump in and don't give the motion. If you guys have concerns, we'll pull something from the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. That's Councilman Keenan with the first, and I have a second from?
I'll second.
Councilman Grassley. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signal aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that's unanimously approved as far as the consent agenda. Brings us to new business, and it's my pleasure to introduce our curator for the Gatehouse Museum, Adrian Smith, and she's going to give us a presentation about the gatehouse and the update of sorts, and I'm really excited about this, and I, I've been, I've been somewhat attuned, maybe not as much as, as I would like to have time to be in tune, but I would like the council and the public to know how much has really, what kind of good stuff is happening on a weekly basis at the gatehouse. So Adrian, it's all you.
Hello. As Marilyn said, my name is Adrian Smith. I'm the curator of the gatehouse. I've been there about a year and a half now, making a lot of changes in our display spaces and also some ways that the museum itself operates. This past year was the museum's 25th anniversary, so September 11th is our very unfortunate anniversary. 1997 was when the museum opened, but the, the museum's history goes back much further than that. Previously, it was known as the Room of History, and it was housed here in the townhouse, and Thelma Wimmer herself started the collection about 1965, so we have all kinds of things from all kinds of periods. We've been very successful in our student internship programs. Here are pictures of our two last year interns, so one was from Stevenson University and the other was from Liberty High School. We'll be welcoming another student from Liberty High School again this year. They do different projects depending on what their individual needs and concerns are. I was a former middle school teacher, and so I really try to tailor what we have at the museum to what they're trying to achieve in their own goals. So this past year, we had record visitor numbers. It was the highest we've had since our complete records since 2017, and almost the highest ever, if you exclude our first year, where they were just off the charts. So I'll, we'll come back to that in just a moment. Our collaboration with the Community Media Center, as with here, really resulted in a lot higher visitorship, so we previously had a porch talk program where individual speakers came to the gatehouse, but that was sort of a concern in its accessibility and weather results and things like that. So being able to host it here and have people be able to watch those whenever was convenient for them has really resulted in a lot of great response. We've also had a lot of operational updates here at the gatehouse. We now have a collections policy for the first time ever. We have a volunteer guide. We have a building and operations guide, so should somebody else leave unexpectedly, we do tend to have a lot of turnover in the gatehouse. There's now a format for procedures that are basic things that go on, on a day-to-day basis, and contacts for local things and all that. We also have an institutional history, again, just trying to gather, because there hasn't ever been that collected before, our various previous curators had lots of strengths in different areas, and when you know that coming in, it's much easier to see how that has built over the previous time. Okay, so these are the visitors' numbers. The blue is the past year. The red line, which is a little bit hard to see, but it's the one that goes right through the middle, those are the historical averages exclusive of the pandemic, so the ones where Marilyn mandated our closure are not included in that. The yellow that goes pretty ziggy zaggy are last year's numbers. The only real discrepancy here of note is in September and October, and those are lower for this year because we were closed for a number of weeks for our painting of our upstairs spaces, and the gatehouse itself, especially with all the work that has gone on in Millard Cooper Park of late, is very dependent on weather, so if you miss a good weekend, you miss a big chunk of visitors. So that's what's going on with that. And just for kind of comparison's sake, last February, we were only open six days, so if you move the chunk over, you can use your imagination. The large picture on this is when our sidewalk was under construction recently. You can really see in this picture, too, the sincere dip in the right side of the building, so that has just this past week been lifted, and some cosmetic repairs have been done on that. There is some other structural work that needs to happen with that. It's, it's been structurally sound, so the floor is now even, but the fixes on the woodwork and things like that are still sort of in progress. The biggest completed projects of this year were our electrical capacity. We ran a very successful 3D imaging program for students in the Carroll County Public Schools, and we had wait lists for the program, and it was excellent, and then we got the first batch of kids in, and we couldn't keep them online or even the lights on while we were doing the program. So now we can do that again, and I'm very excited to do it again. We had the entire upstairs repainted. It had not been done since the beginning of the museum, I don't think. There's a picture in the middle there of when the painting was undergone, so it is now a very kind of light cream color, and we tried to match the trim color to the original color of the stain on the floors. And so that was based on the records that we have of the construction of Springfield Hospital, and that would have been reflected in the gatehouse itself. So that's how we decided to do that. We'll come back to that in just a minute, too. So the porch lift, and then we had air conditioning unit installed that actually works, which is very exciting. Air conditioning isn't just a comfort feature in the gatehouse itself. Having a stable temperature as well as stable humidity really helps preserve artifacts. When you don't have that fluctuation, stuff doesn't peel as much, it doesn't deteriorate as fast, that sort of thing. In progress, we've had our ongoing pocket door bathroom battle, so hopefully the sixth person will be successful. We've, we're looking into, and we've gotten a couple bids on putting storms on the windows, and we've looked into ones that have light filtering capacity, so that by installing those storms, not only can we filter the light coming in, but that allows us to buy less expensive casements. So the casements that are in the museum are the 1965 to 1977 cases. So cases that are up to museum industry standards are unbelievably expensive, several thousand dollars apiece, and so if you can buy the ones that are normal glass rather than the filtering glass, because you already have the filters on the windows, it's a lot cheaper.
Excellent.
So, and there's also some exterior painting, especially on the porch, as I mentioned. Those are the things that are big upcoming. So the historical preservation of the space, these are some 1890s images of the hospital. On their pictures, they were labeled as 1916, but they appear in the hospital report of the Board of Managers as early as the late 1890s, so I think they're much earlier than that. We used these images, as well as a series of others, in our decisions of what to do with upstairs. Now, we know that the gatehouse itself was used as a residence for the Shipley family. It was not used as a part of the hospital working, but again, the materials that were used in the gatehouse were the same materials that were used in the bulk of the hospital. So in the light of trying to make it a dual-purpose facility, where we are using it as an office, we are using it as a visitor space, and trying to try to take that influence from it and work it into a way that we can use this. So our office space has been updated very generously on that, and then our archive room is also turning into an additional exhibit space. So when we reopen the end of February, we will have that additional space upstairs that can be visited on a regular basis, not just on an appointment basis. So our current exhibit is 1950s. We'll come back to that as well. All right, so we have a very cool image of Betty Beesman at the top of this, who looks rather like our volunteer, Colleen Kelly, showing off some of our artifacts that are coming up in our mid-century exhibit. Now, this is not yet staged. We were just filling the case to make sure the case was full enough looking, but we have repainted the, the dining room of the house to what we think is the 1954 color. So the Shipleys had to leave at the death of William Shipley in 1954, and this light switch was contemporary to that time period, and this was the first color, as you can see in the paint swatch there, on the wall. We're pretty sure we got it as close as we could. So the basis of the idea of this current exhibit is when people come into the museum, if they're locals, most of them remember Sykesville High School, and so this allows us to talk about the fire, this allows us to talk about the changes when high schools went from 11 grades to 12 grades, talks about integration and all kinds of other kind of cool pieces that can be used over time to build that story. We also have a lot of new hospital employees who have moved into the townhouses that are just adjacent to the hospital through the tunnel, and many of them are sort of curious about that particular time period, and in particular, how 32's construction changed the way that town worked versus going to Eldersburg worked. And so I think it's a really good way to kind of build that together. Yeah. This is another picture of the high school. So the museum reopens Friday, February 24th. However, we're having a open house on Saturday, March 4th, from 12 to 3:00. We are not normally open on Saturdays. This is sort of a very special reopen to sort of introduce the event and have a belated celebration of our 25th anniversary, because we were unable to do that because of painting going on in September. So our first exhibit focus of our mid-century exhibit is food, so hence Betty Beesman holding Coca-Cola and milk a minute ago. And then that exhibit will run for four years with a variety of topics, so the bulk of it will remain the same, but pieces will change. So our next focus is businesses, and that goes along with a matriciding program that we've been working on with several volunteers, trying to get a better record of the businesses on Main Street that have been there throughout time. We are nowhere near completing it, but we're hoping to at least get through this time period at that point. So we also have our new intern coming in from Liberty High School, as I said. She's focusing on a arts and crafts, art deco thing. She's not really a historian per se, so it's a little creative, but it, she'll be adding into our upstairs display, talking about in particular how this house is an example of craftsman style and that kind of thing. And hopefully, some of the construction will be done here on Main Street in time for her to do some other work down here, too. We'll see. And again, upstairs archive is being turned into exhibit space. That won't be complete at the March 4th date, but it will be open so that you can see the progress we've made on it. And there will be other updates to the building, including apparently replacing our boiler that broke today, so. We'll be reviving the spring history walk this year on the linear trail. I believe the date for that is April 15th. It's a Saturday, where we'll be talking about the progressive building in the area along the linear trail and how that used to be used and how it's used today, and kind of what's going on as far as the integration of the pedestrian plan in town today. So it's a really good way to talk about the past and the present. We will have a speaker series again this year, and we will collaborate with CMC again. We just sent out the requests for those, so I don't, I can't say exactly what those will be yet. We're also piloting a field trip program, so the individuals that really like to come into the porch to do the porch talks, in order to fill that need of being in that historical setting, we're going to do a bunch of meetups at various local historical sites in order to have them not be alone on their little adventures. We'll continue to do our farmer's market outreach. We did that six times, I think, last year, and we are going to continue with the Christmas and Halloween and probably other town events, helping out doing whatever needs to be done there. We have some other kids' historical crafts and activities. Our first run for this spring, before the splash pad opens, will be taking over that space to do a laundry program where they'll have to grind soap and learn about laundry bluing and scrub, and there we go. We're going to also do a Remembrance Day ceremony next fall. We're collaborating with the local Girl Scout Council on that, as well as the American Legion here. So there's a lot of pieces going with that, but it'll be, I think, fairly respectful, and I can talk about that more at a different time. And we're also reviving the historical house tour. We'll be partnering with the Maryland Historical Trust, two sites that are here in the Sykesville area, as well as I'll be interpreting the townhouse here, and our volunteer, Colleen, will be at the gatehouse interpreting that site in order to have sort of a complete program with that as well. So we're hoping to bring back as many of the programs as people had expected before the pandemic. We're getting there.
Adrian, do you have an idea? Will the historical house tour be around the holiday season?
It'll be holidays like it was before, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. It sort of depends on how the historical trust, because they have to get permission to, yeah, the owner, or not owners, but the people that live in those houses, yeah. So I have a couple things about, as far as features, and some of them go back to the water concerns. Here in town, as well as at the gatehouse, and even here at the townhouse, directional signage to our historical properties is basically non-existent. So this is the view you see of the gatehouse coming down the road. You would not know from the side what the building is, and you cannot really see our historical placard, and especially since the sidewalk at the house and across in Millard Cooper Park has been replaced, it sort of draws foot traffic to the unsafe tiny sidewalk. There's also some concerns I have about stormwater management, and I'll show that in a second, and restroom access, which Joe promised me will happen. South Branch Park does have a restroom that is open year-round, or they have, and here they have, well, but Cooper Park is not open year-round.
Oh, so you were intentionally referring to South Branch. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Right, right, yeah. And so especially since the splash pad went in and the new playground equipment went in, and having a four-year-old myself, not having a restroom there on the shoulder seasons especially is a huge problem for parents with little kids, like even though right now we're closed to the public for our winter break thing, we get people knocking on the door all the time asking to use the bathroom. So, and I also with that really encourage you to do some kind of organic use survey where you're looking at not just how many people are in the park. I know you've done traffic surveys before, but seeing how people are using the amenities that are currently there. So, yeah.
Adrian, can you go back a second?
Yeah.
You said that the facilities at Cooper Park aren't available all year round?
No, they're not.
The bathrooms.
The bathrooms, yes.
I thought the bathrooms were.
No, the bathrooms are closed during the winter because there's no heat at the, or no significant heat at the snack shack.
Gotcha.
We are looking into that, and that is, that is one of the improvements we want to make to the snack shack, so that we can leave those bathrooms open year-round.
Okay, I was under the impression it was open. Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, I'm there all day answering questions about tree limbs and things from people. It's not my job, but okay. So again, with the stormwater, it, I wish I'd brought a stick. So that's my car. But when it rains heavily, such as it did today, you can see that the gutters on this side of the street, as well as the, I guess they're not really gutters, but the big rocks that were put in on the other side, the water just pours down the side, and then at the gatehouse driveway, it crosses the street and goes straight down your handicap frame. So there's some real concerns as far as safety of that waterway management, that kind of thing. So very concerned about that. That's really all I have for you. We'd really love to see you at the gatehouse. I hope you will come to our open house, or even at your leisure with your guests, so that you have at home or by yourself, so. Does anybody have any questions about what's going on at the gatehouse?
Adrian, what are your hours?
So right now, as I said, we're closed until the end of February, and then we'll be open back in our off-season hours, so we're open on Mondays in the morning and from 9:30 to 12:30, and then on Fridays, I'm there from 9:30 to 5:30, and Sundays, year round, we're open 12 to 5:00.
Okay.
So, yeah. In the summertime, we add a Wednesday day, and I'm there in the evenings on Thursday and Friday. That was requested by our interesting contingent that comes by after dinner or before dinner. We get a lot of visitors at about 4:30 to 7:00.
So a comment and a question. So one, the way my mind works is not from a historian perspective, so to see all of the thought that's gone into even picking paint colors and how you'll do walls and all of it, I just absolutely think is beautiful, and really appreciate all the thought that goes into that, so that's the comment. Really, really nicely done. I really appreciated the presentation today. A question in reference to tracking visitors. How do you track visitors? Is it like a little notepad that people write down and they say that they're there? I guess some, the question's coming from a basis of could we be missing any of the visitors that are coming in, or do we make sure that we track every single person?
So at the gatehouse, we have a sign-in sheet, and so we keep on a daily record that record, which has contact information and that sort of thing on it, and that sort of thing goes back to COVID restrictions. Before that, it's often more vague, but we also keep a daily staff count with a ticker because it's, it doesn't always line up.
Got it. Thank you.
Not everybody remembers to sign in.
I'm, I'm one of those people. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Excellent. After we finish with our mid-century exhibit, our next major focus will be comparing 1890 Sykesville to 1980 Sykesville, so it'll be best of times, worst of times. It'll be very exciting. So we have a long-term goal, and I'm very excited to work with you guys on what, what that will entail.
I guarantee we are equally excited, if not more, to work with you, Adrian. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to our second item of new business. If anybody's following the agenda, it's item number four. Consider, discuss, act on the introduction of ordinance number 2023-01 for fiscal year 2023 budget revision. Quick item summary, and then I'm going to turn this all over to Joe. As we progress through the fiscal year, several budget categories need to be adjusted to properly account for current and expected revenues and expenses for the remainder of fiscal year 2023. This document includes an overall increase in revenues and expenditures of $246,279. As I've met with Joe at length to discuss this one-on-one, I'm comfortable, but I'd like him to do all the talking from this point forward, with, with your succinct and, and very thorough report for us.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor said, this is, again, this is budget revision number one for FY23, so as most of you have kind of gotten used to what our normal program is, is we have one budget revision kind of in, in the middle of the year to adjust everything, to make sure that we're kind of operating the way we're supposed to be operating, and we'll have another budget revision right before the end of the fiscal year. So this is our, obviously, our mid-fiscal year budget revision. Council was provided with a kind of a spreadsheet that shows all of the individual line item adjustments. I'm just going to hit some of the, kind of the bigger items, just to, just to make sure we hit what's important. Obviously, if anybody has any question about any of those individual line items, please just stop me as we are, as we're going through. But specifically, when we're looking at just the revenue side of the budget revision, obviously, we've increased real estate taxes a little bit. You don't see it in this, the current treasures report yet, and you'll actually see it next month, but we've actually already received more property tax current fiscal year than we anticipated, so we're actually bumping that number up a little bit.
So I actually had a question there. So we anticipated a pretty big bump with the development of Warfield. Is all of that built in to this 1.6 number? It's 1.6 and now 1.726 number?
Yes, that was our, that was, that was already anticipated.
That includes bump up? Okay.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we, we, what we believe this, this increase is, is actually the assessed values are finally starting to hit, and so that's, that's why we're seeing a little bit more revenue there. The next big one in revenues is just the intergovernmental line item, which is state aid for police protection. This is basically a grant we get from the state based on salaries that we pay to the police department, so that is actually increased by $21,000. Obviously, the more you spend in the police department, the more you get back. It's certainly not a one-for-one, otherwise we'd be spending a lot more money in the police department, but any more money we get from the state, we're happy to, we're happy to look at it. And then really, for, from a revenue standpoint, there's nothing else until the miscellaneous category, which we made several adjustments within there, including the grants category. We did receive a grant to update our historic, historic district guidelines, so there is a $12,500 increase there. Also, there was actually a budgeting error that I had made when we originally adopted the budget, showing that we were using capital reserve money in one category where it should have been grant revenue. So again, that was just a correction in there. And then thanks to our treasurer, our interest line items have actually increased quite a bit. We were able to negotiate better CD rates and better rates on our savings accounts, so we're seeing additional revenues in those interest categories. The unrestricted fund balance, we're bumping up a little bit. This was something we talked about when we were doing the repaving projects. Obviously, we have expected highway user revenues every year. Last fiscal year, we actually didn't use all of our highway user revenues, so that money gets deposited in our unrestricted fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. We want to use those in the current fiscal year, so we just have to pull those out, so that's where the majority of that increase is just those highway user revenues. That's the majority of the revenue side of things. If anybody has any questions about any other revenue category or anything else that I might have touched on as, as far as revenues go, please feel free to yell, yell now. If not, we'll move on to expenses.
Please.
Expenditures, just starting there at the top with the mayor and town council. We did increase several categories mainly related to the newsletter and the Christmas decorations. We keep expanding out of our Christmas decoration program in downtown, and they're always a little more expensive than we expect them to be, so we had to bump that up ever so slightly.
Were production costs really 50% increase?
I'm sorry?
I noticed it was a 50% increase.
For?
For the newsletter.
I mean, really? I mean. Well, it's actually, so we've been actually trending down in the newsletter category Well, it's actually, so we've been actually trending down in the newsletter category because we'd actually been cutting what's just called color out of the out of the newsletter. So uh, we did get some feedback from the public that they want to see that back. So we've had to we've had to bump it back up.
Okay.
Anything else on that section? Okay. Uh, next was per professional services. Uh, so a couple of these categories had to be uh, increased rather significantly. Legal counsel, uh, just to cover some of the ongoing uh, legal issues that we're dealing with. And then the professional services line item is specifically back to the historic district guideline update. So that's actually the expense side of the grant that we were talking about before. We do expect that to be around the twenty-five thousand dollar mark, half of which is uh, going to be grant reimbursed.
I did have a question here in reference to the engineering costs going away. Is that because we're not anticipating needing those funds for ARPA projects?
Well, because there's a separate category for specifically for ARPA funded categories.
That's how we're doing it.
Correct.
Because when we talked about it before, we talked about engineering, coming out of engineering instead of out of ARPA. At least that's how I remember it. Maybe I was wrong, but.
I think that was last fiscal year when we were looking at like conceptual plans and trying to get better ideas for what projects were going to be. Now that we're kind of past that concept plan phase, it's all together in that.
Thank you.
So are we going to keep that category there in the budget, then after the ARPA funds are spent, we'll just go back to using that?
Right, in in really any any kind of engineering work that we would do outside of, say, an ARPA project would would actually hit that line item. We're just not anticipating any more this fiscal year.
Got it. Okay.
Because we're we're spending quite a bit in engineering just on the ARPA side of things. We don't need to do anything else.
And just for the edification of the public, ARPA is American Rescue.
Rescue Plan Funds, yeah.
Which is the three points.
Yeah.
Right, right. Either way, it's uh, the the three point uh, one five, three point one two million. So for the public. Okay, thank you.
And then maybe just more for the public. The reason why our other projects aren't happening is it takes a lot of staff resources to do the ARPA projects. Even though we get help from outside firms to assist with these other projects, right?
Right, there's still there's still lots of coordination and uh, lots of behind the scenes work that has to happen to to pull all of these off.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, only a few minor changes to the administrative category, um, the biggest being computer maintenance. And that's re- really just a of an operational update or a contract update, uh, that they were adding a few more, let's call it benefits to our security. There.
Very important.
Then we but did buy some new desks. When we redid the floors in here, some of the older furniture just didn't look right.
It's also about forty-five to fifty-five years old.
Right.
And made of.
Park.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I did notice your hard computer hardware went down.
Correct.
Um, you're not going to keep running old boxes that are going to break on you at an opportune time, so.
No, mo- most of our computers have been updated. I think if there's one that needs to be, it's probably mine. But again, they're they're working now and.
I'm a big fan of routine swapping. Okay, good, good, good.
We'll always have a line item for computer hardware, so just.
Of course, but when it goes down drat, when it went down by forty percent, I went, what?
Yeah. That that would likely cover, yeah, that line item even the way uh, post-revision would probably still cover one new computer, so. And that's just.
It went it went down rather than up and that, I expected it to go up by two or three percent. When it went down by forty, I went, no, I'm curious.
Would you like to pinch pennies?
Joe, I believe that a lot of those computers were replaced within the past year, year and a half, correct?
Yeah, well, I think it was a little bit longer than that. It was right before COVID, we just went through. We had an operating system issue where a lot of our computers were running off a Windows system that weren't wasn't going to be supported anymore. So we just went ahead and replaced several computers when we did that as well. So yes, most of the computers are relatively new. Next would be the public safety department. So lots of line item changes in public safety and a lot of these are just unanticipated expenses. Namely, uh, vehicle maintenance. Uh, we had uh, certain employees retire or leave. And when we do that, they actually get paid out their accumulated vacation time. So that's another category that got hit. Uh, because we are short on staff, we actually have increased overtime costs with with our existing officers. Uh, a lot of these expenses can be offset by reducing salaries. So again, it's uh, our salary number was based on a full complement of officers. And because we haven't had that, I don't think at all this year, uh, that that number can be brought down. Though, s- some of these are actually grant-funded projects too. I believe the computer software was a records management system that uh, that we had implemented this year. That's offset by by a grant revenue. Also, the training and education budget is, Sergeant Kertner is participating in a leadership program through Northwestern University. It is Northwestern.
Correct.
Um, so again, that's also uh, grant-funded. So that's why you don't see the complete offset by just a reduction in salaries. Because there is some grant revenues that's offsetting the the remainder, the remaining changes in the public safety budget.
I know there's at least one police vehicle that we won't have to worry about transmission going up on.
Yes.
Okay.
And there's another police vehicle that we won't have to worry about replacing the water pump? Is that? Out of here. Yeah.
Good.
Uh, only a minor change there in the public works and sanitation department.
Joe, can we go back a second and then maybe the chief can um, answer this better? Increase in budget for community outreach, is that where the officers are handing out these amazing things to?
I wish it were that. It is actually the advertising for vacancies. That's what that is.
Indeed it is.
Right, right, indeed.
Very expensive.
If we had, uh, we could say it was for community outreach. If we had that full complement of officers, we'd be able to spend a lot more time out in the in the community.
Okay, because I'm not opposed to have a budget line item for your department for those specifics. I know the police officers give out the little junior badges and trinkets. I think that your department needs to have a line item for that.
Thank you. Mental note, that'd be higher next year.
I support that. The councilwoman said, that sounds like a great idea. So you got more of you group?
Of course we do. Uh, next category, uh, streets and roads. Uh, the only change there is that contracted services item. And as uh, many of you probably remember, earlier in the fiscal year, when we were actually down uh, employees in the uh, public works department, we had to use a third-party contractor to help us out there. That's just recognizing that expense.
Have you have you had to use that at all?
Not since then.
Not since then? Okay.
We've we've been relatively stable in the public works department since then.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know, that's 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 us kind of asking about that other. So we're still.
Still doing okay.
Still doing okay.
We're down one, so.
Got it. Amazing.
Uh, in parks maintenance, again, uh, several uh, changes to individual line items there. A lot of these were just unanticipated costs related to maintenance. Uh, you know, certain playgrounds, the borders had started to, then we had like these timber borders that started to degrade, so we had to have those replaced. There was painting that had to happen at Jones Park. There was the grinder pump issue with the with the bathroom. So again, it was lots of little things that just kind of started piling up. Uh, and once we started to make improvements, it was like, well, we don't necessarily want to stop.
Backing up.
We want to keep going. So to to make sure that we don't get surprised anymore. So that was the biggest uh, issue there with with property maintenance. Is just making sure that we're keeping up with some of the uh, the park projects. Uh, we did have to bump up uh, tree care and maintenance a little bit because we did, uh, some of you remember usually that line item is around the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range. And given fiscal year, we cut that down to ten. Uh, we might have cut a little too deep there. So we just, we did, we had to bump that back up, given. Luckily, it's been a mild winter, so no, no big trees issues. I know I had to.
Put his snow by the anyway.
I had to say it. I had to say it.
Cussing it.
I'm just twenty. I like the snow. I don't know.
Did you just say you like the snow as well?
Come on, man. Grow up where I grew up. You wouldn't like it anymore.
And I think.
There you go.
As a as a complete side note, I did see, I think the first chance of snow we're going to get is February fourth.
I saw it.
Um, so that's uh, it for park maintenance, the visitor center and post office. Uh, so we're bumping up the building maintenance. Um, this was uh, as a result of the painting work that had been done there. As we were getting ready to do the painting, obviously there was some stucco repair and some roof repair that we had not anticipated. So we had to make sure we uh, we got that done, obviously prior to painting. And we could have stopped there, but there was also internal uh, improvements that we wanted to do to the post office. So rather than just uh, stopping the improvements at the post office and and uh, not asking for more more money, we just decided, well, let's let's ask for it. It's maintenance that needs to be done anyway. It's mainly painting and some floor repair and some window repair on the interior side now of the post office. So that's where that eighteen thousand is.
And the water bottle fill station.
And the water.
For the exterior.
I neglected to mention that.
It's all right.
Sorry, ma'am.
All cool.
Uh, let's see, nothing big really until you get down to employee benefits. We actually had to reduce uh, the employee benefits category and that's mainly due to, uh, again, this is somewhat of a uh, uh, of a police department function. Our contribution to the LEOPS program or the retirement program for the police officers was a little less than we anticipated. Again, that is directly related to the fact that we're just not fully staffed at the police department.
Oh, okay. I was going to say down by twenty-six point nine percent. I was like, down by?
Pushful thinking.
I was worried that something was going wrong, chief, but it sounds like it's okay.
You know, it's when you uh, when you want to have ten full-time officers and we have seven, it's.
Okay, so you're okay with down because of that. Not that you're happy with that, but.
No, we'd we'd much rather be paying that three.
That's what I was going to say. I expected a slight increase and saw a twenty-six percent decrease. Wondered why.
Yeah.
That's all.
So I guess I have a question in reference to that is that if we do get more officers on later this uh, FY, doesn't that cost go up or no?
It's a it's an annual expense, so we've already paid the full amount for, well, it's like, I guess it's calendar year twenty-one.
And we catch up next year, essentially?
Yeah, well, it's fiscal year, it's based on the last, like, the year.
The last payroll.
Yeah, last payroll in June.
Okay.
So again, it, we won't have, we won't see an increase in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
That's the budget. Uh, and then the only other changes there are in uh, capital outlay. Uh, the one, the streets and roads line item, that fifty thousand dollars is again, just like we kind of talked about, those are the highway user revenues that we're pulling from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. This is the expense side of that transaction. And then in public safety, uh, we're increasing, we're basically accelerating the vehicle purchase that we had scheduled for FY twenty-four. So this is actually kudos to the police department. Uh, we had a vehicle purchase scheduled for current fiscal year, which we did place the order for. We actually should be receiving here in the next thirty days or so. Where at the same time we were placing that order, we were actually given the opportunity to put an order in for a uh, another electric vehicle. Matter of fact, it's electric pickup truck. Um, they were not sure exactly when they'd be able to deliver that, but they knew if we didn't order it when we ordered it, we wouldn't even get it uh, potentially for another year or two. Uh, so we went ahead and and played the game of going ahead and ordering it. And uh, it turns out that might actually be delivered here in the next month or so as well. So this was at a slightly drastically reduced price too, because uh, you know, I want to say shortly after we placed the order, the prices on these vehicles went up at least ten thousand dollars. And I think as part of ordering it when we did, we actually got the upfitting for free. Was that was that part of the pro- part of the?
No, that was included in the.
That was included in the purchase price, yeah. Um, and to remind council too, we also did receive a grant, uh, I think it was actually last fiscal year when we were awarded the grant, was for uh, electric vehicle purchases. It was a seventy-five hundred dollar basically offset that uh, we were awarded. So again, that will be applied uh, to this vehicle purchase as well.
Basically giving it away.
I wish it were that.
Pretty darn good deal.
No, it's a great deal.
It's a very good deal. And and again, I remember uh, chief and I went back and forth several times on whether or not, uh, you know, we needed two pickup trucks for the police department. But it turns out that this pickup truck was going to be a lot uh, less expensive than even a regular cruiser would have ended up being. So again, it was a, uh, all in all, it's going to be a very good deal for the town.
What two vehicles are you going to be getting?
They're actually both trucks, yeah. Ford F-one-fifty, which will be the lieutenant's car. And then the the second vehicle is the F-one-fifty Lightning, which is the electric vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are they, will they have enough space that you can have a person sit in the backseat?
We probably won't outfit either one with a cage because if it, in the case of the lieutenant, he doesn't arrest people anymore, so.
I mean, he's the head that wears it around.
Since he's the lieutenant now. Not his primary purpose, I should say.
But he does need the pickup to to carry water around.
Uh, I'm a firearms instructor, so there is uh, equipment to and from the the range.
Targets, the posts.
Targets and things.
Ammunition, yeah.
So you need a hauling vehicle for that?
I've been using my own car at no cost to you for the mileage.
He has.
For five years, just saying. I don't lock anybody up anymore.
Thank you.
But your signature skills.
Trying to make it up.
No, I was really, that's, I'm glad you got the opportunity to share that because I don't think many people realize that outside of.
And he would have probably never shared that with anyone.
Until you gave him a hard time about, about, yeah, not arresting anyone anymore. Okay.
Did he also take your handcuffs away? That's that's important for later.
These aren't my daily users.
Probably throwing those on me later.
Is that all for the?
So those are the the changes we are proposing. Um, it does uh, impact the budget. So again, there is a change of revenues and expenses uh, by two hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine uh, dollars. Uh, obviously, Craig and I have worked very hard on the budget revision, so we are recommending uh, the council approve the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one as presented and to schedule the public hearing and adoption for February thirteenth.
So we've been going with questions as we went along there. Are there any more uh, need, uh, is there any more need for clarification from Joe?
No. I'd just like to point out, they did a great job in that with the inflation rate as it's been, there, your proposal, this requires you only go up by five point four percent. And in a world where we're talking sixty, yeah, percent of inflation, I think you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dyer, for converting these numbers to percentages.
In your head.
It helps.
I think you did do it in your head.
I know you did. I'm sure you did.
Uh, so with that, uh, are, is there a a motion on the table?
I motion to uh, move forward with ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
Second.
Okay, uh, and before I call for a vote, is there any need for further debate?
Do we need to uh, specify that we're having a public hearing on this for February thirteenth?
Yes, I would.
I didn't, I didn't get all the way through.
Okay.
As presented and to instruct staff to schedule the public hearing and adoption for February thirteenth.
And then I assume that you'll you'll want to second that amendment?
I want to second now that he's finished, yes, because I did give a dramatic pause.
Yes, you did. Very good.
Love those pauses. Okay, I'll call for a vote now. All in favor of approval of the ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh one as presented and to instruct staff to schedule the public hearing and adoption for February thirteenth, please signify by raising your hand with aye.
Aye.
I would just say it's approval of the introduction of the ordinance.
Yes.
You you said approval of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Improve the introduction of the ordinance. I'm sorry. Thank you.
As presented, thank you. Very important. Now, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Keenan. Any opposed? All right, so that has been introduced. Um, that brings us to our announcements and reports, and I will start those off. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, right here. We have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission and Police Auxiliary. If interested, please email the town at town@Sykesville.net for more information about volunteering. We also have openings uh, available on the town's Board of Election Supervisors. If you are interested, please email town@Sykesville.net and include your address. That brings us to staff updates, and I hope that Joe's update includes Main Street Water and Sewer.
It does. Um, so just to give everybody a, uh, obviously, uh, everybody have seen the work has be, has commenced on Main Street. That's actually early. It wasn't supposed to start until basically the middle of February. So the fact that the contractors are out there doing work is uh, is a good sign that hopefully they'll be done early as well. Uh, and then work is continuing on Springfield Avenue. Uh, we do have monthly updates with the contractors, the representatives from the county and the state. They come here once a month to talk about all the ongoings of uh, both projects. Uh, but we also get regular updates from the county, uh, uh, well, I guess the county utilities department or bureau, whatever. Um, uh, that send us regular updates. So when the contractors send out their look-aheads for, you know, certain weeks, uh, the county then forwards those to us as well, so that we can show those with the public, make sure they're uh, accessible on our website. Um, uh, I know before the meeting, we were talking about some stormwater concerns, uh, and obviously as the work has started, uh, they've blocked off some of the inlets along Main Street or almost all of the inlets along Main Street. Um, obviously, when it rains, water can't get in. Uh, so we've been working with the contractor already to try to get those alleviated so that not only when there's a potential rain event, um, really all the time, uh, there'll at least be some strategic areas that are remained open so that we don't have the potential for uh, puddles forming or freezing to happen along uh, along those areas. So uh, so far, again, uh, progress has been as expected, at least on Main Street. The the Springfield Avenue part has been a little more complicated and they've they've run into some issues on, uh, you know, it's kind of chicken and egg kind of issues where they'll still start to put in part of the water sewer line and realize that the stormwater issues that uh, will eventually be upgraded are in the way. So it's like, well, if they would have done that first, then this wouldn't have been an issue, but then they would have been bumping into the water and sewer line. So again, they're they're working things out there along Springfield Avenue. Again, no significant uh, report of any kind of uh, delay on completion yet. So again, it's still relatively early, but we'll we'll keep our fingers crossed that they're able to keep uh, keep trucking along.
And uh, we had gotten a concerned, a a call from a concerned um, business owner about the contractors themselves uh, taking up valuable parking in the Mack lot since there will be a time when parking on Main Street will be eliminated in certain sections. And so that business owner expressed concern that the contractors themselves park across the river at the South Branch Park. And I know that you reached out to to the county about that and the contractor's been informed.
Yes, there there's been no uh, no issues reported back since the work has actually started and contractors have been on site. Matter of fact, the the one report I've heard is that the contractors have been very uh, aware of any kind of merchant concerns and, you know, have been working with the merchants anytime there's, you know, an immediate issue, like uh, the, not just a parking issue, but if they're working right out in front of a a certain store, they need to accommodate, you know, pedestrians. but if they're working right out in front of a a certain store, they need to accommodate, you know, pedestrian traffic, or whatever it is, the the contractors are willing to do that.
I've had the same feedback, so I've been pleased to hear that about the Main Street contractors.
Right.
Can can I stop you right there, are you starting another?
Tom?
But.
Are you going to continue with roads?
I was, I was done with that.
But the reason why I wanted to stop you, um with the contractors or anybody who parks over on the other side of um the river?
South Branch, yeah.
Yeah, the bridge, there is a railing that has been blocked off, so how are these people safely crossing over?
I don't know, uh they're probably going underneath the block off area, because I think it's just caution tape, or is it?
It's caution tape, because there's, yes, the.
And the railing, the railing itself has been reported several times, again, it's on a state bridge, so it's it's not necessarily work that we can do.
Right.
We know we've reached out to state highways to let them know that, I think they're the ones that put the caution tape on it. Um uh but hopefully that gets repaired in short order.
Okay, just making you aware that there's difficulties crossing over that bridge.
We are painfully aware of it.
As always, yeah, yeah, that's.
And of the.
One day, I'll say, let's just say five years from now, when all of this construction is done, and all the beautifications happened, and all the bridge work is completed, it's going to be a sight to see.
Yes, we'll just keep thinking about that.
Exactly.
When they don't return our calls.
So one other que- so we we talked about this previously before the meeting, but there was a huge puddle that could have easily led to an accident last night. And hopefully, the stormwater mitigation plan that you're talking about will correct that. In the event that it doesn't correct it, is there anything that uh town residents should be doing, or any of us should be doing, in order to inform you or Public Works of the problem, so that cones can be put out, other precautionary things can happen, close the road if we need to, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, uh our Public Works Director is is very aware of anytime the contractors are out there, and anytime there's a potential storm, uh you know, he's he's usually the first one here to see it anyway.
Yeah.
Um so if there is a need to close a road, do something like that. But but steps are are being taken to alleviate some of that. Obviously, if a if a resident sees something, has a concern about something, we always encourage them to call and reach out, and if it's something they haven't seen yet, then we'll take care of it.
I guess my, the concern is, is that I saw it last night at eight or nine o'clock at night, and probably no one will be here. And so, you know, if you're, most people are very respectful coming down Sandusky, and they slow down, right?
Geez, sorry, public who was listening to this.
In the in the event, in the event that someone doesn't see it, or whatever, they just want to make sure that we're safe. And it's almost as soon as it was happening, you know, a little later, I think I did see orange cones down, and so I think we're on top of it. But it's just, you know, it doesn't take much for an accident to occur.
Well, we always say, uh anytime you're approaching a construction site, so even after hours, signs are still up to make people aware that there uh there's potentially, let's just call it a rough road, ahead, so you know, obey the speed limit, for one, you know, twenty five miles an hour, it's a lot less likely that you're going to hydroplane. Um so if there's a puddle or anything like that, you should be able to get through okay.
Okay.
Anything else on stormwater?
Okay, uh the only other thing was just a reminder, if everybody hadn't gotten uh an email from uh Municipal League yet, uh they did announce the dates uh for the Municipal League meeting in uh the summer. That's a, obviously, the hotels book up very fast, we do have a block that that we've reserved, so if anybody's interested in going to Mel this year, please let us know, so that we can make sure we have the proper accommodations. Those dates are the June twenty fifth to the twenty eighth, if anybody's wondering. So you can let me or carry out. And that is all I have.
Uh Joe, uh.
Oh, sorry.
With the sudden departure of one of the Public Works employees, um are we, where are we on that?
Uh actively recruiting.
Are we just one down, or?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need, thanks.
Okay, all right, so that is our updates from uh an administrative perspective. That brings us to our treasurer's reports. Craig, please come to the podium and. And entertain us.
Uh good evening, everybody, uh council, public, uh quick note that I do not represent the Bengals, I know I got ordered. I'm a Raven stan all the way, so sorry if I offend anybody in that regard.
You did offend me, so.
We can move on, we can move on.
It's the Bengals, not the Bangles, I mean, it's all girl group, but anyway, um so anyway, I like to report or present the December Treasurers Report at this timeframe. So let's just dive right into the statement of revenues and expenditures, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review or whatever. Uh if you look all the way down, you'll notice that we're ninety four thousand over budgeted at this moment, which, as Joe might have mentioned, we've gotten some nice revenue in in next, already this month, which will reverse that pretty quickly. But just for uh review's sake, in keeping track, uh November, we were two eighty under budget, so now that was about a change of about three hundred seventy five thousand that quick. Um mainly, though, it was based basically on the retirement uh payments for both the employees and the layoffs, which was total one hundred fifty four thousand, so whoosh there. Uh as well as we had a free payroll month, which only happens twice a year, unfortunately, it happened in December where the revenue, which actually we only got fifty one thousand dollars in revenue in December, which is fairly low.
Not unfortunately for the employees, though.
No, we had enough money to pay, the paper. So we were pretty good there. Uh so in terms of like the expenses themselves, the check register, pretty dull, really young, you know, everything was normal, except for the one Maryland State, Maryland Retirement State Agency payment of one hundred fifty four. Other than that, I don't really, don't think there's anything to mention or discuss.
Getting a lot of nodding, no, no questions for the treasurer?
Um so with that said, also, like I said, in January, we received five hundred sixty six thousand in real estate taxes, as well as we received a nice check for forty thousand for the highway user taxes, so nice, two six hundred and four thousand, it's going to quickly erase that small under budget situ- I mean, over budget situation that we are in now, so. Other than that, I really, it's a pretty, pretty straightforward month, so for halfway through the year, so rolling forward.
Thank you, Craig.
I'm not supposed to do that, because I can hear.
Well, I mean, council member girl just drew a microphone on the table.
Don't mess with her, you'll get. My jaw's.
We'll cut you free, thank you, Craig, I appreciate you.
Okay.
Thanks, uh hey, thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks for negotiating a better savings account.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that was nice, it was nice to see in the budget amendment.
Very nice, um and so to follow that act, we have uh Chief spotting for the public safety report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I cannot follow that act, I can assure you. Uh before I get into the public safety report, I wanted to brief you all on an incident that happened last week, specifically last Thursday, with regard to an escape from uh Central Corrections Facility over here in Buttercup, I'm sure you've all heard by now. Uh I wanted to kind of give you a timeline here of of how this all transpired, and no, the good news is, as of today, he was apprehended, he's back in custody.
Yeah.
So um very good news. Um it was this past Thursday, and around eleven thirty is when the state police actually dispatched the initial call for service of an escape at Central Corrections Facility. It used to be called Central Laundry, now it's uh Central Corrections Facility. Uh we sent Officer Young over immediately um to assist uh and to gather information for for us, for me. Uh there was a very heavy uh response from state police sheriff's office, and unfortunately, just just one from our department, but that's all we had at the time. Come to find out that the person was last seen at nine thirty, so we were already dealing with the two hour lapse in time, um in terms of trying to uh search and and recover this individual. Again, very heavy police presence, six K nines, aerial support, um again, three, three departments, as well as investigators from the Maryland State Apprehension Team, whose job is to specifically locate escapees and violent uh fugitives. It took Officer Young some time to gather some information to to get to me, and around uh one o'clock is when I sent out the first Nixle, hopefully you all received that, uh was just some basic information about the escape and a description of the suspect. Uh I then proceeded to send out a face, put out a Facebook post, along with a a photograph of the suspect, even though I'm sorry, I couldn't blow it up any bigger than what it was, but that's my limited technical skills. Uh at least we got a picture out there and a description, uh just to alert our residents as to what was going on. Um school was locked down, I think it was twelve, twelve thirty, they they don't call it a lockdown anymore, it's secure. Uh they called it a secure facility, and that was lifted at around two eleven PM. At around one forty two PM, all officers were advised, all the assisting departments were advised that we could clear, that uh the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, who actually, let me back up for a second. You you all know this is a state facility, it's outside of our town limits. The initial response goes to the state police. When they respond, uh at the same time, the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services has their own investigators, they're called to the scene. And then ultimately, it is the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services who makes the decision about where where the investigation is going to go and what to do. Well, around one forty two, uh all police agencies were advised to clear, and then Department of Public Safety, can I just say DPSCS?
Yes, moving forward, sure.
Uh we're going to assume the investigation, and that they were actually calling off the search at that point. Um so Officer Young returned back to 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 the station. Um at that point, we were advised that they were going to be obtaining an arrest warrant for the escapee, and that they believed that that he was not still in the area, because now you're looking at what, four or five hours later from the time he was last seen. So since then, um there has been some some Facebook comments I shared with Joe, I'm sure you probably all saw, some people questioned our response and the lack of information. And I tried to explain to people what our role is in in a case like this, uh we're strictly there to assist. Um it is important for us to get information out to the public, but in a timely manner, but it has to be accurate information. And that that was um why there was some delay uh in getting that out, but um I think we can do better next time, quite honestly. I've I've reached out to uh, it's not called the Warren Warden, but the facility administrator over there, and he and I plan to to meet in in the very near future, to maybe discuss uh better means, better ways to get information to us in a more timely fashion, so that we can get information out to our residents, and and hopefully at least alert them to what's going on and and so forth. I know some of the merchants were upset as well, that uh I guess they saw the Nixle and and the lack of follow up, so uh there's some work to be done there. Uh but again, uh we're kind of at a disadvantage in that, you know, we're we're trying to get information from the scene with one investigator, with one one officer on the scene, and uh accurate information to to get out to the public. So that's kind of where we stand on that, if anybody has any specific questions, we, we're happy to address them. Can it be done better? Certainly, I'm hoping that after I meet with the facility administrator, we'll develop a plan. There is no MOUs or agreements between us and them. In the past, we have had had an MOU with Springfield Hospital regarding their elopements. I would think that a similar one could be put in place for for escapes. Uh in the past, I have met with some of the wardens that that have been there, they've they've changed quite frequently over the years, um which is understandable. Uh but I have not yet met with the the current facility administrator, but we'll be planning to do so in the near future, so. Any questions about any of that?
Was the nine thirty to twelve time gap because they did not know, or they simply failed to tell you?
Generally, what they do is, when they notice somebody's missing, they'll do, they'll bring everybody back in, do a recount, and for whatever reason, it it took upwards of two hours before they actually called the state police, who is the, is their protocol, it's call the state police first. State police sends all available resources there, and then the search begins. But I don't know why it was was such a lapse, but I'm hoping I'll I'll find out when I meet with uh Mr. Sprecher.
Thank you. Can the public ask any questions?
Uh not normally, I'm sorry. I'm sure he'll be available to you, though, after the meeting, thank you.
Uh Chief, just to clarify, this is the facility on Buttercup?
Correct.
Court. And that is called an escapee versus Springfield?
He's a prisoner.
Which is called an elopement?
Because they're patients.
Okay, and the Springfield facility is the?
Totally separate, yeah.
Criminally?
There are some that are ordered by the courts to to be there, criminally, judged criminally insane, or.
I didn't want to say that, but thank you.
I think that's the language they use, yeah.
But it's not all of them.
No.
It's not everyone who's on the facility, so.
Those folks that are that are geared to the not criminally responsible are locked down?
That's in the set facility?
A set facility, yeah, most of the elopements are maybe court ordered, but just mentally.
I just wanted to clarify, because I know in in years past, you have elopements, and then now you have an escapee, I just wanted to clarify facility versus facility, okay?
Just so you know, the Correctional Maryland, uh the Correctional uh Central Correctional Facility is a minimum security facility, it's not a pre-release anymore, although it was in the past. About a hundred nineteen staff, uh over two hundred fifty inmates, the average stay is eighteen months. So this guy walked away, he was serving the end of a five year sentence, he walked away with probably less than eighteen months. Now he's looking at a a ten year felony for for escape, so not real smart. They are mostly nonviolent offenders, this this person was not particularly violent, he he was in there for a felony theft, a second degree assault was not, which is not a violent assault, and an unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. So he did have a long history, but mostly thefts and that sort of thing.
He did have one prior escape from another prison.
Yeah, yeah, was from Prince George's County, and for all intent and purposes, that's where he was 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 ultimately recovered this morning. He was probably in Prince George's County by the time we we got notified, quite honestly, at at eleven thirty. Two hours is plenty of time to be picked up and driven back to Prince George's County, so uh that's kind of where we are, you know?
Are you notified when the wardens are changed, when they're?
Not at all, no. And I take responsibility for that, I could be reaching out there frequently and and meeting with them and and both.
Or maybe some, no, no, I wouldn't, so I'm sure you've taken responsibility, but maybe at your next meeting, have established some protocol for when that does happen on their end, that they have a protocol to.
Right.
Reach out to us.
Right, no, we were never notified about this by them in any way, and I'm hoping that that will improve. It shouldn't be that we hear it go over the radio, that there's an escape, which, you know, the chances of that person coming into town are pretty pretty severe. I would say a ninety nine percent chance that if somebody escapes there, they're going to be walking through our town, whether it's Raincliff or or otherwise. So um we do have a need to know, and uh you know, there's got to be a better means to communicate that to us, and for us to alert our residents, you know, whatever necessary precautions need to be put in place.
Is there something, just general guidance anywhere out there, and I haven't gone to look? Like what happens if they did come, say, onto my property, or onto someone, my neighbor's property, other than calling nine one one? Like, what are you supposed to do?
Well, if it was a violent offender.
I mean, I could see that people could be afraid.
Yeah, shelter in place, call nine one one if you see, you know, that's why we try to get the description out there as soon as we can, if someone saw him walking down the road, uh certainly would want us, we would want to know about it, so that we could.
Likely that you would know that's an escapee is probably swing, because they have, they bring it back in to do a recount, and if they're not clad in in a prison garb, you're not going to do it evidently.
He was supposedly wearing his blue prison jumpsuit, but he may have had other other clothing.
Like the jacket that had corrects on, if you can take that off, but I think the the issue because of the count.
Yes, it's on my list.
So just, keep the doors locked, then call us, and we'll come investigate.
Yeah, I did want to mention a couple of other things, there, in the DPSCS website, there is a system called Smart nine one one I'm going to be looking into. Uh previously, uh several years ago, I found out that there was a community escape alert system, I think I even put it out to the to the residents, this is probably five or six years ago, if not more. But now they call it Smart one one, Smart nine one one, which there is allegedly a way for residents to register on this website and be notified when there's an escape in their area. So I'm going to look into the details of that and get that out to you as well as the public, once I confirm that it's in place and it's working properly.
Thank you.
Do the um, when they change administrators or Warren, wardens, or whatever their, whatever politically correct term, is there a website that says, oh, you know, this is the person?
There is a website, that identifies who, the warden actually is is oversees several institutions, so the warden doesn't actually even work there. But from what I'm told, there's an assistant warden, and there's a facility administrator, who's kind of the go to person. That's the person we've reached out to and and actually spoken with so far.
I was going to say, you know, you're a busy man, but if you check, you said to yourself, you know, every, every first Monday of the month, I would go to that webpage and see if the names have changed.
With my ticker list, yes.
So it's not in the town, but I.
Actually, it's a screen scraping jump.
Town folklore or whatever, is that they're more likely to head towards Freedom and into the woods? Um because I I think the description was using bright orange jumpsuit.
Blue.
Blue, light blue, okay. Um you know, is there any, anything we can do, I mean, it's not within the town limits, Freedom Park, um but it seems to be, I mean, that's kids and families, and you don't know if there's anything we can do about that, or?
I think just having a police presence there and 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 surrounding that area as soon is, as soon as. as soon, as soon as possible, will certainly be helpful to have, you know, that deterrent factor of having police at Freedom Park, having police in the Raincliff community, anywhere that the person might run through is, you know, would be helpful.
I think this, as, first of all, I appreciate the update and I know the public does too, because I know some people had their feathers up, but, standard up?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Feathers, standards.
Anyway, so I appreciate you addressing this, Floris Chief, and I think what this comes down to is not our response as much as it is the communication, obviously, and that it wasn't timely and that you're going to address that moving forward with us, with them, so I appreciate that. And so the rest?
Yeah, let's get to the real business at hand, and I'll try to be brief. You'll see the PSR covers January third to the sixteenth, three, four hundred and nineteen Eight assists other agency, six community policing, two hundred and twenty patrol checks, twenty-one traffic enforcement initiatives, again, four hundred and nineteen events. And there was eight incident reports that went along with that same time period. Does anyone have any questions about those incident reports?
More just comment. About mental health trainings, just a recognition that there's an increase in, or continues to be ongoing behavioral health concerns and issues. I know we talked about getting the police force, the youth mental health first aid in terms of addressing youth issues, just wondering where we are in terms of being able to follow up on that. I know we weren't able to bring?
Was that the lead program?
No, the lead program is post, post-arrest, pre-trial? Pre-adjudication.
So I've taken the role of attending some of those meetings, they're not held very often, but I'm working on, like, trying to learn that. And Veronica Deeks from the Health Department has welcomed me with help along, so that is a situation that's moving forward. The other program that you talked about, our last conversation was, you were going to look into?
So we had, yeah, so within the mental health first aid, it's being offered at the?
Community college.
Community college, and there had been, I think, people that were going to come here, were going there. We can obviously continue to pursue having that offered here.
In my conversations with the folks there, they don't have the personnel or capacity to bring it outside because they have the program at the college.
Right, right.
So it would be encouraged if you wanted to participate to go there.
Yeah, and we've made that announcement a couple times in terms of accessing those classes. I think I was thinking more about our police force and getting the youth mental health first aid in terms of interacting with youth, whereas the regular mental health first aid that we have through CIT is?
I understand.
Is the adult piece. But also then, when we look at also the merchants, as well as maybe like an Narcan training, as we've talked about, having the AEDs, but also having Narcan down on Main Street, I think would be?
That would be probably another Health Department issue, like resource, we don't, I don't have the?
No, it would be through the Health Department, but just kind of highlighting that I think we have some resources in the county that we could potentially bring down to help address, support the community as well as our officers who are dealing with a lot of this and making sure that they have the resources.
So this is a twofold ask, I guess then, if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilwoman Garoppa, the idea that, A, the child first aid, the youth, the youth mental health first aid training for the police officers themselves?
Yes.
And then asking that the police department, that Sykesville Police Department, kind of be the facilitator, a community outreach to educate the public with respect to the training that's happening at the county level, at the community college?
Well, there's that piece and then also looking at an increased accessibility of Narcan. So the Health Department could come down and provide Narcan training to like our merchants, if maybe we could talk to them, see if they'd be interested, so that it's accessible to everybody, like the AEDs are in terms of public spaces and?
No, I understand.
Yeah, so I think there are a couple issues of just, we continue to see it, and so I want to make sure that we're continuing to have the conversation about supports to our officers and our families and community here.
Is the police force the right way to get this communication out, or does that come from the town, or?
So the town can announce the mental health first aid trainings that are happening at the community college. If there's an interest in, enough interest in the town, either through our merchants or family members, and we want to host it down here, we can definitely figure out how to do that. And I think I forwarded, I thought I forwarded some information about maybe costs from the Health Department. It wouldn't be free like it is at the, at the?
Community.
Community center, but if we could, you know, if there was enough interest, then we could, we could look at what the cost is to pay for that to be provided here in the townhouse for town residents. And there's the adult, there's a, there's a mental health first aid training which kind of focuses more around adult diagnoses and if someone's presenting with hearing voices, how can we as a community intervene? It's, you're just like first aid CPR for, not, it's not a doctor or whatever, but just if I run into somebody, what do I do? To support my neighbors. And then the youth one is for anyone who interacts with youth. And so it's not diagnosis focused as much as, when do I know how to, and how do I know to talk to someone who might be experiencing suicidal thoughts or ideation, and when do I know to like, I can talk with them, and when do I know, hey, I need to get a professional in here? So there are two different ones that we can look at. And then the Narcan is a leave, is a training that anyone can get, but we could definitely get it for our merchants. And then like we've talked about, the AEDs being helpful because it is a preventative and frequently, I mean, there weren't any fentanyl overdoses, which, thank goodness. But if there were, those are usually, someone doesn't know they've taken it. It's usually, I think I've taken something else and that's actually in there, so it's not a, you know, an intended thing, but then, like a, like a heart attack, we could have those accessible. I mean, I know the police have them, I don't know if we're doing leave behind years.
Yeah.
So when someone does, so when our officer is in the county, I think, right, hit a, are interacting with someone who they've used Narcan with, they usually are educating their community or family members and leaving behind Narcan in case something else happens. But I think there are a couple preventative things that we can be doing and really supporting our citizens, because I'm seeing an increase in, or ongoing issues with mental health concerns, and I know people want to help our neighbors, that's why, that's what makes it pretty.
If I could just point out that if you're referring to the last incident report, talking about the mental health issues, Officer Hoppa did an excellent job on that and communicating and actually leaving one of the behavioral health, you know, brochures that we have, which is the former mayor pushed very heavily and we're still using. And then on the bright spot, overdoses are down significantly in the county, I think it's twelve percent fatal overdoses and twelve percent, just the non-fatal overdoses. And here in town, our overdoses went down significantly last year as well, I think we went from ten to, I think, one. So?
It's huge.
Something's working.
That's good, that's great to hear.
Glad to see that, yeah.
Because I know our county numbers spiked, and so glad to hear that the?
No, the county?
The county, what, two years ago, I think?
Oh, a couple of years ago, yeah.
Our numbers like went way up, so I know they've been trying to put a lot in place.
Here they're down, yeah.
Which is awesome, it's great to hear that they are.
And you touched on the AED, just, this will be the last thing I say.
No, that's why you're up there.
I've got some questions.
Oh, okay. It won't be the last thing I say. I did want to point out, the one incident where Sergeant Kirchner assisted with CPR, as you know, this is the second time that he's done this, and ironically, we just had all the staff retrained in CPR and AED just within the last three weeks, so how timely was that to have that retraining and then have one of our officers actually assist in bringing somebody back to life, basically. So Sergeant Kirchner does it again. You weren't with him this time.
Not because I don't do anything anymore.
You're in the office. No, that's all I have.
Councilman Garoppa has a question.
I got a couple of questions, Chief.
Oh, okay.
Sorry to give you a heads up on that. So zero-zero-two, was there any follow-up on the suspicious person, was that?
Yes, we did an extensive investigation there and spoke with actually the person who was the suspicious person. Young person, nineteen years old, lives in the neighborhood. According to he and his parents, he was just trying to do something nice. So may have been misperceived as a creepy situation, when in reality, he was just trying to do something nice. And people rightfully reported it and we rightfully investigated it, but?
Couldn't read the room, the kid, nothing else.
Right, right. Nowadays, you do something nice.
You can't do anything else. And number seven, the, was that, was that just natural causes?
Yes, seventy-two-year-old male, party bag.
You mentioned fentanyl, you guys are properly, I don't know, I don't know how, but you guys know how to protect yourselves, you find a bag and you pick it up and all of a sudden you start to feel woozy?
We don't.
You use gloves and all those?
We're not trying to pick it up. We don't, but yeah.
All right. Because I don't know what to do, but I'm hoping you did, is what I want to hear.
We try to be cautious and we have the proper equipment and gear, but if it's airborne inside a vehicle or home and we walk into it, we'll never know it until it hits us.
I've only heard stories that that kind of things happen.
It has.
Men like you've walked into a room and all of a sudden, you're a patient and you have no idea why.
We generally won't, that, when I was young, you know, if we'd get something like that, we'd search and search and search and, you know, those kinds of days are going on.
Happening to arrested people?
Yes.
But his penmanship has improved dramatically since then.
All right, I got one more question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Just one more, zero-zero-eight, what happens in that situation?
What was that?
As a possession of controlled substance?
The marijuana is seized and ultimately destroyed, there's no enforcement.
Not even a ticket? So this person just had it and didn't have his card, or?
There was no card.
There was no card?
So that's still, then, still technically unlawful to possess, and they're changing those laws and it's, it'd be difficult to keep up with it. Now they've changed the weights and the amounts and whether it's civil and?
If there's still an infraction for consuming that in public?
Have to be a lawyer to figure out what the language reads. But basically, pretty much scot-free at this point.
Okay.
Unless you're, you have a truckload of it, you're pretty much going to walk.
Okay.
But we do take it.
Yeah, no, I just?
Destroy it.
Just wondering if maybe there was a card missing or just like, got it?
Everybody says they have a card.
Yeah.
You're required to display it.
So presuming everyone else at the table has no more questions for Chief, I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I want to give a shout out, or as we call here in Sykesville, a psych-out, to Corporal Schlereth and Officer Picardo. I read in the report that they took the time to go and visit?
They did.
Mr. Eugene Johnson and his wife, and to discuss with them what took place in their neighborhood, and I'm sure allied whatever concerns they may have had. So I appreciate them reaching out and taking the time to do that.
Sure.
And I'm sure that information was passed along to neighbors as well, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, that was, could have been, could have been a lot worse, that event. Fortunately, that was contained in the reports here, I don't know if you read all the details, but both officers received some very minor, minor injuries from that. And there was some, kind of a split between negative feedback and positive feedback from the community. So they took that to heart and they felt it necessary to go back and try to, what's the word I'm looking for? Rebuild those, that relationship and those bonds and to let people know they were simply doing their job, responding to a complaint. And so unfortunately, someone had to be arrested, rightfully so. And at the end of the day, you know, hopefully the community will understand, we have a job to do, and when we're called, we're going to take action when it's necessary. In this case, it was necessary. Thankfully, they weren't hurt worse.
And, and, and again, for the edification of the public referring to a resistance to an arrest that ensued, a physical altercation between the police officers and the person who was ultimately arrested?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That brings us to council committee reports. Is there anyone here at the table with anything worthy of sharing?
Just for me, the executive director will be presenting for the Downtown Sykesville Connection, her annual report at our next council meeting on February thirteenth. And I distributed to?
Yes.
All council members this snazzy little pamphlet with the calendar events on the back and some updates about what the DSC has done the last year. And all this information can also be found on downtownsykesville.com.
Excellent, thank you, Councilman Keenan.
I got one question, Joe, about the budget revisions. Where is that going to be placed on the web page?
We already did that.
I know we did, I, it got approved before I wanted to ask the question. Where's that, will that be under the, will that be on the bottom of the front of the page?
Right, the news section there on the front page of the website, make sure you have that available.
And it'll be the spreadsheet that we got, the pretty detailed stuff?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have another question. With the change in governor, new budgets and some talks about local money and county governments and changes in some of the grants for locals, is there a way to get, maybe in our next meeting, a summary of?
Of what the state is proposing?
Of what the governor's proposing, the impact that it would have on Sykesville, like what, what of these, I mean, there was, there's a lot of transportation discussion, there's a lot of money going into the housing and community development area.
Well, and again, all of those programs, those are existing programs, it's a matter of whether or not we'd be, I shouldn't say eligible for them, but whether or not we want to actually go to pursue those same projects. So again, I'm not so sure there's a direct impact necessarily, again, I haven't gone through the sixty-four billion dollar budget, whatever it is, but it's, there is a lot of money floating around and, yeah, I think it's a matter of, I believe it's going to be increased funding for certain grant programs. So the grant programs that we've already been applying for that have been competitive maybe won't be quite as competitive in the future. I don't think there's going to be any immediate impact, there's going to be no impact to property taxes or anything like that. There's a potential for some income tax changes, but even that would be a relatively minor impact to the town. Again, anything else I've heard has been more anecdotal or nothing that's going to have any kind of significant change to our, our operating budget. Again, like I said, it'd probably be more of a grant issue.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I was wondering, because it was talking a lot about transportation and community development in terms of new programs, and just a recognition that we have two mayors that have been appointed as secretaries.
Yeah.
So that's huge in terms of?
We're real happy with DHCD.
I am thrilled at the appointment at the DHCD, yes.
So, yeah, I mean, just, hopefully that also then kind of trickles down and impacts, you know, the locality or the locals, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Historic District meets us Wednesday at seven o'clock. As the mayor had mentioned, we have room for members. If you're interested and you want to check it out, see what you get into, come, join us for a meeting at seven o'clock. And it's once a month and it's real easy, and as Joe had said, we are in the process of updating our guidelines, which will make it even easier.
And I may have an appointment to bring your, to bring to the council very soon at HCC.
Looking forward to it.
So a couple of things, next planning commission meeting is on February sixth here, seven o'clock. It's the first Monday of the month, that's when we do them all. I did have a couple of other questions unrelated to that liaison role. One of them had to do with budget-related information. You'll recall the discussion that we had with former Governor Hogan's office just before they left office.
I only think of it every day.
I think about it a lot too, not every day, but really close. And just for the public's identification, we were asking for at least a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars strategic demolition grant funding, and that we had gone in for one point two-five million, but we didn't receive it, we didn't receive anything. So then we made a pitch to get seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we got some nice words in a meeting with them, but then I didn't see any follow-up, at least that I was aware of. And maybe I missed something?
Just the email that I shared with the council, their response to their internal investigation is, they were calling it, certainly, I don't know how deeply they dove, but?
Yeah.
Yes.
So then I was wondering?
It resulted in nothing, their investigation.
So I'm wondering when the next time would be to go and have a new conversation with a new group of folks? I don't know if you've been thinking about that at all?
I have been, and I was at the governor's inauguration and ran into the newly appointed, but not yet Senate-approved director, I should say, secretary of the Department of Housing and Community Development, who is one of those two mayors that Councilman Garof was just referring to, that have been appointed to the cabinet under the new governor. He is the soon-to-be former mayor of Salisbury. And I did have a very quick interlude with him, and we'll be speaking to him directly as soon as he takes his seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I cannot, if you need any help in any way, I'm more than happy to come along and join you as we've done before.
Thank you.
Second thing is wondering about the cul-de-sac at Oklahoma, and wondering if there's been any updates for trash and recycling receptacles?
We have not made any progress yet.
And is there a potential timeline? Not yet, okay, that's all you needed to say, but I might ask again, so I'll just throw that out there. I could ask every two weeks. If you had twenty trash cans at the end of your cul-de-sac, you might, you might say something, too, so...
The crisis continues.
With that, I will yield.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield. Councilman Dyer? No, okay. I'd like to announce that the council is going to be retreating. Will be participating in a strategic planning retreat on February fourth, which is a Saturday, and I hope to be only here for five to seven hours. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. It'll be at least four, if not five, so buckle up. And then I'd like to announce that, what's that, Councilman Dyer?
I was rousing him about something.
Okay. I'd like to announce our annual Maryland Mayors Association If I Were Mayor I Would... ...essay contest, and it's twenty-third, twenty-third edition. So it's a fourth-grade essay writing contest, and the Maryland Municipal Leagues Mayor Association, as well as many other Maryland, many other municipal leagues across the country, their mayors associations also participate in this. But here in Maryland, we have, as a result of this over the last twenty-three years, educated over fifty thousand students about municipal government and the role of mayor. And the contest remains digital this year to ensure one of our longest-running programs stays accessible to any and all classroom environments. So just a quick blurb, there are eleven districts across Maryland that, for this purpose, for this essay contest, and the eleventh district is ours, and it is inclusive of all of Carroll County and nothing but Carroll County. And each district of the eleven will have one winner and three runner-ups named. And if any of those winners are here in our south, southern portion of the county, I will be attending the ceremony. But in the meantime, I'm going to be scheduling a visit to the fourth graders at Piney Ridge, as I did last, last year.
Piney Ridge.
Piney Ridge, I knew that as soon as I said it, at Piney Ridge, and thank you. And so I'll be doing that again this year at some point in February, and having a good time there. So if anyone knows a fourth grader at Piney Ridge and/or a parent of one, let them know the mayor's coming. Okay, and I have great expectations for this essay contest this year. Any other announcements from the room?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley, do I have a second?
Second.
Council President Carter with the second, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight-thirty-four, thank you, everyone.